Okay, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, March the 5th, 2019, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd ask everyone to please bow your head for a few minutes of silent prayer and reflection. If you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, right now, Ms. Jones, could you please advise if there are any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, we do have two adjustments. The first one is to remove economic development from closed session. And the second is to add the I-77 toll road update given by Commissioner McNeely to new business.
Is there a motion to approve the adjustments to the agenda and the agenda? Motion by Commissioner Haupt, all in favor, please say aye. Motion passes unanimously. There are no special recognitions or awards this evening. We do have one appointment before the Board. Mr. Matthew Pierce from the Iredell County Economic Development Corporation is going to give an update on the newly created Small Business Ombudsman Program.
Let me begin by offering my thanks, Beth Jones, for arranging this opportunity, as well as to you Commissioners for allowing me to update you on the Small Business Ombudsman Program. My comments tonight begin by outlining the threefold structure of the SBO program and looking at accomplishments under each of those areas during the past six months. I'll then turn to look at the next six to eighteen months and what I hope to accomplish during that time. Finally, we have an important celebration to mark tonight, so I will end there and, of course, respond to any questions that you might have. The SBO program began in September of 2018. From the outset, I've taken the program to have three main components: small business assistance, connecting to clients, and providing feedback. The SBO program helps small businesses navigate the development process from assessing the feasibility of a particular location through obtaining a certificate of occupancy. To date, I've worked with thirteen small businesses, from Harmony to Raleigh School Road in southern Iredell County. Clients include everything from a commercial HVAC repair business to retail agricultural equipment, to food truck operators, with a whole lot of stuff in between. The primary form of assistance has been fielding questions for clients. What is the next step in the development process? With whom do I need to speak to get my building permit? Where can I park my gourmet ice cream and milkshake truck? Frequently enough, the questions are of sufficient complexity that they require me to back up and do some research. Turns out, for example, that where you can park any kind of food truck in the county is much more complicated than one would think. And it helps to have someone who can locate and interpret the several zoning ordinances within the county. Indeed, much of the time spent serving clients occurs behind the scenes, answering questions that require background research. In North Carolina, there are at least three other persons who do work comparable to mine. Located in Cary, Greenville, and Fayetteville, they are embedded in municipal development departments. This, in turn, gives them ready access not only to the planners and inspectors involved in the development departments, but also everyone who walks in the door, including small businesses looking to set up shop or relocate. In contrast to my colleagues, my countywide service area doesn't allow me to be embedded within a municipal department. This, in turn, requires intentional, ongoing efforts to connect with clients. With that in mind, there are thus far three ways that I have been working to connect with folks. The first is a partnership with county development services, who have been diligent in handing out my information to small businesses they've encountered, as well as keeping me in email loops with clients. About half of the folks I've served have come from referral by county development services. The earlier I'm able to connect with clients, the better. Helping people understand the challenges of a particular location before they lease or buy is a key aspect of the SBO program. With that said, there are two other approaches I can use to connect with clients. First, I connect with clients through professional allies. Cultivating relationships with everyone from the Small Business Center, Mitchell Community College, to local real estate firms provides a means of connecting to clients when, for example, they go in to get assistance with business plans at Mitchell and begin discussing possible locations with a Realtor. As I'll discuss in a moment, this is one aspect of the program I'm focusing, I'll be focusing on more in the coming months. A third way of connecting to clients comes via presence and presentations to community dates. Date, I've had the opportunity to meet with and discuss my role with five community groups, all of them connected either to Mooresville or Statesville Chamber of Commerce. I serve as representative to both Mooresville and Statesville downcom commissions. I'm proud to say that thus far, I am the only man in Iredell County to have ever served, however briefly, as one of Statesville's leading ladies. The third component of the SBO program is feedback. Being connected to, but outside of city and county departments, allows me to have candid conversations with small business owners who have already gone through the development process, as well as those in the midst of the process. Those conversations, in turn, allow me to communicate suggestions back to those departments. The first thing I did when I arrived was to meet with several sets of clubs. I first met with planning and inspection staff to get a sense of the places where they thought the development process could be improved, including advice that needed to be given to small businesses that they themselves couldn't give. Additionally, I conducted interviews with small businesses that had recently relocated or opened up shop. These were long-form interviews that covered everything, from how they chose their locations to any hiccups they encountered in the process. There are three things I'd like to focus on over the next six to eighteen months. In terms of the assistance provided to clients, I'll be developing a guide to development for small businesses here in Iredell County. As anyone who's been through the development process knows, the process of building or renovating a building differs with every project and with every parcel of land. With that in mind, the suggestion made most frequently to me has been the development of a rudimentary guide containing the major stages of development, as well as important contacts in the cities and in the county. Other jurisdictions have done this, but our situation is unique insofar as we have multiple zoning jurisdictions to contend with. The architectural firm Adams and Associates in Mooresville has offered to provide both input and assistance with revisions on this guide. Now that I have my feet a little better underneath me, I can focus more of my time connecting to clients. In brief, this means first, developing regular scheduled visits with chamber-related and other groups to get the word out about this service provided free to clients by the county. I am, of course, open to suggestions about groups with whom I should speak. Secondly, I'll be working in the coming months to tighten the connection to the planning departments throughout the county, as well as to real estate firms that serve the area. With all that said, we have particular reason to celebrate today. One of the first businesses that I worked with, from start to finish, opened up their new location just yesterday. Treads is an automotive and power sports sales, service, and accessory center, now located at 2118 Shadrado Highway. They are important not only because they've just celebrated their opening, but because they are typical of the challenges facing many small businesses. They had an unanticipated move on a short timeframe, limited financial resources, and found a great location that required a change of use on the building. Of the thirteen clients, I've had five meet those characteristics. I've said before, and I believe it worth repeating, that small businesses are in a uniquely vulnerable spot when it comes to development. My colleagues in Cary and Fayetteville work with all kinds of development, residential, commercial, and industrial, but they have said that they spend a disproportionate amount of time working with small businesses because of the needs that small businesses in particular have. With that said, and I say this not simply as a matter of job security, what the county has done in identifying and addressing this need is an important part of maintaining a business-friendly and pro-entrepreneurial environment. Thank you for allowing me to circle people out.
Thank you very much, Matthew. You know, this was a new initiative that the County Commission approved as a result of Commissioner McNeely, who serves on both our General Government Task Force and our Economic Development Task Force and saw the need to be able to address some specific needs of our small businesses. So I would just like him to be able to ask you any questions and expound on whether the vision of what we have is lashing up with what you're seeing out there in reality.
Mr. Chairman, you know, Matthew could wear twenty different hats and still feel, feed my vision of what his position is. I think he's done a really incredible job, because he really had no template to start with, to a point. As you can see, there's very few other communities that have seen this as an important thing that we need to do. So he's kind of had to be the pioneer and cut his own path. And I talked to a lot of people, and they said, "Yeah, Matthew's come by and saw me." Yeah, we talked to Matthew. So he's getting around, and I appreciate it. I still think he's one of our best-kept secrets in the county that we need more and more people to realize. And we've done everything I think we really can, but word of mouth will eventually get us to where we need to go. I always liken it to my family business that started in 1957 and always tell everybody we're an overnight success, because word of mouth has got us our business. So anyway, I think that going forward and talking with Matthew, he's learning different things and trying to fill his way, and like I said, I feel like he's on the right path. This, you know, there'll always be a place in my heart for small business. I don't know anybody that started out with a thousand employees. It all started out with a lot of hard work by somebody that wanted to do something different, and they grew it, and they nurtured it, and they grew it some more, and it turned into whatever it is now, an IBM, a Google, or whatever. So it all started somewhere or another in somebody's house, or basement, or backyard, or shop, or at some little shop on Main Street, or whatever. And I think also, you've got to realize that the work he's doing is helping us revitalize a lot of times some of the areas in our downtowns and the different communities in Iredell County. And that's a plus in itself. We're getting people in business, but we're also rehabbing older businesses and older buildings that are becoming a functional part again that maybe were almost left to be an eyesore. So we're winning in a lot of different ways. We really are. And I just want Matthew to continue the hard work and then continue the process and continue to meet people, and I hope people meet him, and we get out there and help everybody we can. I don't, I hope someday to hear somebody tell me there is no better place to start a business than in Iredell County. Some people say that, some people don't now, but someday I hope that's what they say. And when we get to there, then we will have done a great job, and we're working towards it. So we see the need, and we're there. Thank you, Matthew. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a comment for Matthew. A couple of areas I would ask you to look at, where I get the most phone calls from, are when people have purchased an older building and they've done a fair amount of tear-out, and then they get the revelation that they're going to have to have engineered drawings to build back. Sometimes folks would not tear out if they knew it was going to be so costly to build back. And another thing is with, it seems like the fire marshal is the one that brings most of this to their attention. So if you could work with the Fire Marshal's Office to make sure that, you know, folks know before they go in what it's going to cost. And that's the one thing that I hear the most, is, man, if I'd known I was going to have to do all that, I'd have never tore that wall out.
Part of the reason it's so important for me to identify folks early in the process, to give them, to give them a clearer sense of what's going to be, what's going to take to go from what they're renting or buying to get a fortune.
Another area is change of use. That is a big deal. And the faster somebody can get to that business owner and say, "You realize what you're asking here is going to be a different set of rules." The sooner you can get to them, the better. But I thank you for what you're doing. I think it's going to pay dividends in our community, and we're going to be able to see these older buildings revitalized and making money again. And that's the name of the game.
And Matthew, one other thing, if you'll add to your guide, please press upon people that call you needing your services, or you make a cold call on. Make sure they hire reputable contractors and let them know they do have a responsibility to make sure the contractors are pulling all appropriate permits, so it does not adversely fall back on the leasing or renter or somebody, or the owner of the property, if the contractor doesn't pull their permits.
Yes, sir.
We thank you, sir.
Matthew, it's been, it's been a pleasure to be able to work with you. I think that you are fulfilling the goals that we had as a body of both finding someone who could help folks through a process, help them through sort of an expectation management about the timelines involved that would be appropriate to get things done and approved, and the wickets they have to go through. And I think, as has been mentioned by Vice Chairman Bowles, I mean, that they need to call you before they pick up a sledgehammer. Don't even think about it, you know, talk to you first. But we also, on the backside of this, want to be able to identify those bureaucratic processes or requirements that have crept into the process that are not necessary or unduly restrictive, or simply interpretations or policies that have developed over time that, you know, when you really look back to the enabling legislation or the state building code, or whatever's out there, fire code, that, you know, they've been perhaps applied in a way that is inapplicable or could be more flexible in their approach. Because we want to have safe buildings, but we want to be flexible and a business-friendly community, and not one where you just have to be jumping through hoops all the time. So we need that feedback so we can work with staff to try to achieve that balancing between achieving the goal of protecting citizens, you know, that are using these businesses, but also not making it unduly difficult to open a business here.
You know, I was just thinking, I want to make sure that the citizens call SBO first before they call me SOB. So I'm hoping you're going to do that job for me, Matthew.
Matthew, question, next thing is, what do you keep in mind? We're causing the citizens out here confusion. We can cut that confusion out from the government's standpoint. Well, let's cut that out. It would cost them money when we do that, so let's cut that part out. Thank you.
And I would notice that you're, note that, for the record, that your job, this is fifty percent of your job, that you have other duties in the Economic Development Corporation, and appreciate your work with our existing businesses and working, I think, also with workforce development and other issues. So anything further? Any questions, comments? Thank you very much, Matthew, and we'll see you around. Okay, now we'll move on to, there are no public hearings, by the way, this evening. Item eight is administrative items and matters that were appropriate for a consent agenda. What I'd like to do is, before we go to approve the consent agenda, which would be Items 8.2 through 8.8, which Ms. Jones can summarize, I would like to circle back to Item 8.2, which was a request from Partners Behavioral Health Management for approval to reallocate $2,500 of current funds to support a Med Assist event. And Dr. Denise Howard gave us a overview of that event that is being planned, and we thought it would be appropriate for her to share with a wider audience at the seven o'clock hour some of the details so that it can get the widest possible dissemination and people of Iredell County can take advantage of this unique offering that's never been provided.
Thank you, Commissioner Mallory, and also thank you, Commissioners, and County Manager Ms. Jones, and Ms. Valdez, and also, thank you so much. And thank you for being so receptive at the meeting, the pre-agenda meeting. So I am Dr. Denise Howard. I am a nurse practitioner for Dr. And I am here to tell you about an exciting event that's coming to Iredell County, May the 3rd, it's on a Friday, from 9:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. at the YMCA. North Carolina Medicist is a free pharmacy, and they're coming to give away free over-the-counter medications and also to enroll people who are uninsured, so that they can get their prescription medications since they cannot afford them, or if they cannot afford them. North Carolina Medicist has been in existence since 1997. They started with a $66,000 grant from Presbyterian hospital employees and also from the medical auxiliary in Mecklenburg County. Since then, they have given away approximately $61 million in prescription and over-the-counter medications. The event on the 3rd is for people who are insured and uninsured for the giveaway for over-the-counter medicines, and they're going to give away enough medications for a thousand people to get ten different medicines over the counter, such as Tylenol, allergy medicines, cough medicines, et cetera, that they may or may not be able to buy at the store. They're not going to screen people to see if they have insurance or not, so anyone can come. It's inclusive of all Iredell counties, so people can come from Mooresville, Troutman, anywhere for this event. Hopefully, this event will be something that happens yearly, and we can move it from different cities in Iredell County, such as Mooresville and Troutman. Also, with this event, we're going to do, take advantage, since we're going to have people come, to do some health screenings, such as HIV, diabetes screening, hypertension, and depression screening. We're also going to link people who are uninsured into safety net care for primary care providers, such as Statesville Family Medicine, and, I'm sorry, now the free clinic that's in Mooresville also. This event is a collaboration between Partners Behavioral Health. Wells Fargo gave a $2,900 grant. Partners Behavioral Health, $2,500. Our family, Nathaniel Howard, Joyce Howard's family, is giving $1,100 as a private donation and other donations so that we can make this event possible, because it's not free. Although the medicines are free to the participants, so the clients, it's not free for North Carolina Medicist. They get their medicines through grants, monies, and also through prescription drug programs. But they do raise money through grants also. And I'm excited to say also that Navant Health is bringing their mobile unit, mammogram unit, so that people who are insured and uninsured can have free mammograms. I did share with the Commissioners earlier that I was recently diagnosed with breast cancer, and the type of breast cancer I have is not palpable, so you couldn't feel it on self-exam or clinical, and so the only way it could have been found was from a mammogram. So now my concern is even more for women who are out there not getting mammograms, because they say they can't afford them. So this would be a way for them to get that. And hopefully, Navant will come here yearly also to do that for residents of Iredell County. In conclusion, though, I wanted to let you know, too, that we will do have measurable outcomes at the end of this. As a nurse, I believe in measurable outcomes when you do things. So hopefully, I can come back at another meeting later this summer and give you the outcomes of like how many people came, how many we linked to care, how many mammograms we did, so that you can see this event as being something that's sustainable. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those. I know I did that earlier, but if you have any additional questions, I'll be glad to answer those, too.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of questions. Dr. Howard, I had a couple of questions after you left earlier. Is there an online sign-up or first come, first served up to the thousand people on the, on that 3rd from 9:00 to 2:00?
It's the first come, first served.
First come, first served. And on the mammograms, is that a sign-up also, or just show up, and is that the same times, 9:00 to 2:00?
It's the same time, 9:00 to 2:00, and just show up, and they said they'll do as many as they can within that time period.
Is there another availability for people needing that after that day without a cost, or no?
Not in Iredell County, but that's something we can negotiate with Navant if they find that there's a need, because they're, they've really bought into this, and they know that there's a need in this area. So they're real excited, too, about coming here for the first time.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Well, we certainly appreciate your helping to organize this event. This is, as I said, a first time for Iredell County, and it's an opportunity to try to service the population that either is, that just falls between the cracks, between those who are fully insured and those who are uninsured but have Medicaid. And so there are a lot of people that just are between the two. So over-the-counter medications, up to ten, the normal kind of things that people reach for when you get a cold or the flu, or upset stomach, or whatever, and then the prescription medications that are available. And that's something that they can have mailed to them?
It can be mailed to them. When they sign up, a North Carolina Medicist approves their application for a year, and they send them out in the mail for a ninety-day supply, so they get it in the mail. And that includes insulin, too. So if you're on insulin, you can get your insulin through the mail, too.
Now, that's huge. So people need to, we'll promote this on our website, and I know it'll be, I'm sure, promoted through the Public Health Department, and we'll coordinate with you, ever how to get the word out in the municipalities.
We'll make sure of that. And, excuse me, the Health Department also is part of the partnership. That's one of the other great things about this, is it's about a lot of people together. Iredell Health System, Lake Norman, we've invited Davis Hospital, Piedmont Healthcare, the Y, United Way, so there's a lot of different people, partners, Statesville Family Medicine. There's a lot of different people coming together to make this event happen, Navant. So it's exciting that all of us are working for one common goal.
Well, thank you again, and God bless and Godspeed.
And I'll be back in assembly talk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Jones, if you could summarize the administrative matters that we have discussed at our pre-agenda meeting as appropriate for a consent motion. The pre-agenda meeting, by the way, is at five o'clock. We have moved it from the smaller meeting room in the south wing to this room. Those items are typically presented by staff and are fairly technical in nature in most cases. And so if anyone's interested in being here, we certainly invite you to be here, and these are going to be recorded for posterity and available on the website tomorrow, or the day following. So if you'll please roll through those administrative matters, starting with 8.2.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item that we just heard more about from Dr. Howard was a request from Partners Behavioral Health Management for approval to reallocate $2,500 of current funds to support a Med Assist event, which will be Friday, May the 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Statesville Family YMCA. The next item's a request from Planning and Development for approval of an interlocal agreement for the agreement for the Lake Norman Regional Transportation Commission. This is a two-year agreement, and it is $15,750, which is Aridale County's share per year. There's a request from the Health Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 33, in the amount of $20,441 for additional child health funds. These were state funds that were unexpectedly cut in the budget last year, but has been restored in this year's budget, and those funds will go to purchase some new equipment. There's a request from Parks and Recreation Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 34, to increase funding provided to Aridale Statesville Schools from $25,000 to $50,000, to help cover the cost of utilities and maintenance for athletic and recreational use of school facilities. A request from Parks and Recreation for approval of Provider Location Agreement for Silver and Fit, Fitness Passport, and AARP Renew Active Programs, to authorize the county manager to sign contingent upon reaching an agreement satisfactory between both parties. There is a request from the Finance Department for approval of the Audit Contract, in the amount of $63,450, with Martin Starnes and Associate CPA, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. We did bid this out this year, and as a result, we saw a 10% savings from what we were currently paying. There was finally a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of the minutes from the meeting on February the 19th, 2019.
All right. Any further discussion on the consent items? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, there was a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We'll now return to item 8.1, which is a request from Mr. Ron Wyatt, the Register of Deeds, for approval of a resolution granting authority to set the office hours for both the Statesville and Mooresville offices, in the event of inclement weather or safety issues. In this matter, we discussed at some length two weeks ago, and deferred action until this evening to allow the county manager, and Mr. Wyatt, and Mr. Mixon, who's the clerk of Superior Court, to work out a process of determining when the county offices, register of deeds, and clerk of court might be altered based on inclement weather or other safety issues, and how to communicate that to the public. And they have worked out and agreed upon process, which we've outlined in a resolution, and an appendix to that resolution that gets specific in terms of how they will work through coordinating between the three, what the hours are gonna be, and then communicating that. So, at this point, I'd ask if any of the commissioners have any questions or comments. And I hope Mr. Wyatt is here to respond, or to say anything you'd like, right now.
I'm good.
Okay.
Basically, just so I can recap, we asked the register and the manager to get the procedures in place, working with Lisa. They did that. Those procedures are attachment A, and I think the register of deeds is happy with that, the manager's happy with that, and Lisa signed off on it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, from where I sit, I can't support this. We've had a plan in place, I know, for the last 20 years. We had two of the former register of deeds, never had a problem there. Two of the former managers, never had a problem there. Why we should change now, I don't understand. I read this. I don't see any reason to change what's there.
Mr. Chairman, I understand where Mr. Norman's coming from, but in my opinion, the register of deeds is an elected office, and I think he needs latitude to run his office the way that he sees fit. And I think this gives him his latitude to be able to work with our county manager, and our clerk of court, and even our sheriff, in this situation, to understand where we're at with inclement weather or the safety issues. And I feel like we've come up with a good document here, and as we go forward, we may have to make some adjustments, but as of now, I think it's a working document that we can live with and work with. And with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this resolution with attachment A.
There is a motion on the floor by Commissioner McNeely to accept the resolution, and attachment A. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign?
No.
No. Motion carries four to one. And the resolution, we go ahead and entered into the record as it's printed. Okay, thank you, Mr. Wyatt. All right, now we'll move on to item nine. There are no announcements of any vacancies occurring on boards or commissions. Item 10, there are no appointments to boards or commissions. And we do want to thank the ladies who have come this evening to show support for this medical initiative, and thank you for taking the time out this chilly evening. Item 11, there's no unfinished business that I'm aware of. This is not a public comment period. And new business, Commissioner McNeely has an update on the I-77 toll group that has been working to continue to try to massage this whole thing into something that we can live with.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we met last Wednesday down in Cornelius, the I-77 toll road advisory committee did, met with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. We had last met with them at the end of summer, and we had gave them different options that we would like to see done, and they had come back there at that meeting and told us of different things that they were allowed to do under this contract, a very ominous contract. And so, they have been working, supposedly, in the meantime, to get this done, and we met the other day, and basically, we rehashed our last meeting, and to me, they had basically done nothing on the different things they had told us they were gonna do. And the only reason I bring the news of nothing to us is to show you exactly where we're at with the toll roads, and the stalemate that we're in. So, for the people who are not happy about the toll roads, they're gonna continue to be unhappy, it looks like, for a while. The state may choose to do some of the stuff. They said they could harden shoulders, where we could use the emergency lane at certain times, and these things and that, but yet they come back with no idea of cost, no idea of when, and no idea if they would do these things. There was some other stuff, too. But that was one of the things I thought would maybe help, because that could be considered another lane. So, at this point in time, they're gonna, we're gonna meet again. They haven't told us the exact date, but I hope that they'll have answers, not just regurgitate the same questions back to us with no answers. It was kind of discouraging, to say the least. And we're gonna continue, as Aridale County, to struggle because of the toll roads, in my opinion. It's gonna be a major deficit on our economic development, because of the inability to move freight north and south. And if Charlotte is one of the largest economic engines in the Carolinas, if not the southeast, and we're not able to work with them because of our inability to move freight, we're at a heck of a disadvantage. And right now, we are, gentlemen and ladies. I hope there's some resolution that comes from this. I'm afraid that the toll roads are gonna have to open, and they're gonna have to be active for a while, and I'm hoping after that, that everybody will have an epiphany and realize that this is not the answer. And then maybe we can move forward with some solutions. Until then, we'll probably keep talking about the same stuff at every meeting, and really not getting anywhere.
And when you say "they," are you speaking of NCDOT?
I'm speaking of NCDOT at this point in time, not central. This is dealing with what the Department of Transportation could do, or should do.
Commissioner McNeely mentions an important issue, and that is our freight transportation capacity, particularly north-south, any kind of alternative to Interstate 77. And everybody knows that Highway 21 and Highway 115, which are the only really viable options, are completely backed up, going through Mooresville, and Davidson, and Cornelius, and Huntersville. So, and even if they converted ultimately, seven years down the road, or whatever, the toll road lanes to general-purpose lanes, they are not built to the same standard as the other general-purpose lanes. They are not designed for heavy truck traffic. So, it points out the importance of an endeavor that our planning staff is going to be working on this year, which is to develop a county transportation plan that will be synchronized with the different municipalities, Mooresville, Troutman, Statesville primarily, because they are in the road-building business. We are not in the road-building business in the county. It's the state and municipalities that build roads. But what we have is a phenomenon in the southern end of the county of the incredible shrinking county. It is becoming more and more urbanized, and the municipalities are being asked to either extend their extraterritorial jurisdiction, or to outright annex large portions of county property. But in order to preserve corridors for future development of a road net that's gonna be able to service the county, we're gonna have to make those decisions in the next couple of years. And how we go about doing that, we're just gonna have to look at all the different options. But it is absolutely critical, in terms of logistics, that we be able to maneuver around the choke points that we have, that exist, connecting Interstate 77 down, or 40, down through the 77 corridor to the Charlotte area. There's a tremendous amount of additional freight that's gonna be coming into the east coast, with the widening of the Panama Canal to accept container ships. They've been drudging ports from Jacksonville, Florida, to Savannah, to Charleston, to Wilmington, to right on up the coast. And that additional traffic is gonna be coming our way, and businesses are gonna go where the traffic can go. If the traffic can't go there, those businesses are gonna go elsewhere. They're gonna go on the 26th corridor through South Carolina, or they're gonna go through 85, or whatever. So, it's in our economic benefit to plan ahead. So, we will be encouraging the public to be part of that discussion, as well as working with our municipalities to make sure that we're lashed up with their plans, so that we can help them connect all the different road nets that we're gonna have to have to support the 21st century growth that we're gonna be experiencing. So, thank you, Commissioner McNeely, for your involvement in that.
Yeah. Thank y'all for allowing me to serve on that committee. Think about this. Think about the size of Rock Hill, South Carolina, 40 years ago, and they have eight lanes, and we got four. Statesville and Rock Hill, at that time, 40 years ago, very similar. Not even close now. Not even close. And not to be ugly, or whatever, but that's South Carolina. We paved the roads into South Carolina, not paved the roads up into North Carolina more. So, why?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a point of clarification on item 8.1. It may not be fair to say, we had advisement through the process on item 8.1 from our lawyer. I don't want to say she signed off on it, or prepared it specifically. Is that more fair to say, that you just advised us through the process? I don't want to say something out of turn without you having an opportunity to clarify.
That'd be more appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Did I miss a stink eye? Did I miss that? Lucky man, I was looking away.
Okay, what's the point? I wanna know what the point is. What's the point?
The point was that we got advisement through the process on item 8.1. She had added another paragraph in there, requesting some other steps to be taken with the manager or the register of deeds, specifically. And through the back-and-forth, the register of deeds elected to leave that out of there, and we were okay with that. You know, she just made some other recommendations through the process that...
The question is, what was wrong with what we had there, already?
I don't know that it's, are you asking?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know that it's appropriate for me to say what was wrong with it necessarily. It's my job to give you all legal advice when asked, and I provided that legal advice. What you all choose to do with it from that point is at your discretion, as commissioners.
Okay, that's good. I just, some of this stuff, I don't understand what's going on, is what I'm trying to say. We're playing games, is what I feel like.
Well, item 14, County Manager's Report. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item is just an announcement and reminder to the board, that the Aridale County Employee and Retire Appreciation Ceremony is Friday, March the 8th, at 8:00 a.m. at the Aridale County Agricultural Resource Center. So, this is what we do annually, recognize our employees for the years of service, and our retirees. The second announcement is the grand opening and ribbon-cutting for our Aridale County Recreation Center on Wednesday, March the 13th, at 11:00 a.m., and that is the Berryom Springs property. So, we invite the public and everyone to attend that and see the new facility.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Jones. Item 15, we had a closed session for attorney-client, nothing to specifically report out relative to that.
Actually, we do have a motion.
I have an action, sir.
On the attorney-client?
I have a mo-
Yes.
Okay, that was, yeah, we had one item.
I have one motion.
All right, we'll go ahead and make that motion, then.
Sorry about that.
I'd like to make a motion that we enter into the record a settlement in the amount of $35,000 in Aridale County Matter 18CVS 1802, Majors versus Aridale County.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hough. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Hough, for reminding. There was another item that we discussed, but there's nothing else to report relative to the opioid lawsuit that the county is participating in. Okay. Are there any further items to come before the county commission this evening? All hearts are free.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn has been made by Commissioner McNeely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carries unanimously.